We met. That was really, really a week.
Okay. Is everybody ready? Ready to rock and roll? Look at, look at you. I can't see you. Okay. Fantastic. It is six oh one. And I called the city council meeting of June twenty first, twenty twenty two to order. Local, please.
Councilmember Laritzen?
Here.
One moment, we're having audio issues. Oh, I know why. No, I know why. Hey, could you try one more time, please? Councilmember Laritzen?
I'm here.
She said she's here.
Councilmember Hill?
Present.
Councilmember Luna Leal?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Green? Councilmember for Gency? Mayor Lobby?
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask for approval of the agenda. Does anybody would like to change?
During seven A, our police report, speaking directly about this. Be great. And I think we have to change anything for that.
Hearing no other agenda changes, I would entertain a motion, please.
No moves to approve the agenda?
Luna, last second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you all in favor. At this time, we have housekeeping matters. Anything anybody would like to talk about before we get rolling? Okay. Thank you. If there's anybody in the public would like to speak to city council, please come up. Give us your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
That's not enough time.
It should be more than enough time. Okay.
Um, good evening, city council and mayor lobby. I appreciate you listening to what I have to say. I just come with a huge concern for the safety of our street, Harrison, I own Aspen Traders, which is six thirteen Harrison Avenue. And I felt my life almost got taken from me last winter on Harrison Street. And in fact, it did almost get taken from me. I was crossing between Aspen Leaf and the Delaware. There was four inches of snow on the highway, so you couldn't see the crosswalks. I wasn't depending on the crosswalks. I generally don't depend on the crosswalks because I see situations all day long that are very scary. But I, I was just waiting at the crosswalk. And I was waiting for the street to clear. But a gentleman stopped way in advance of the crosswalk because you couldn't see the crosswalks because it was four inches of snow. I stepped out because he had stopped. And I was waiting for the south, the northbound lane to clear. I wasn't waiting for them to notice that there was no crosswalk. And then there was a woman standing out in the middle of the street. I don't expect them necessarily to see me. So I waited. The first car was like a small Camry. When she got fairly close, maybe five, within five feet, she understood that this car had stopped. Apparently, I would assume, saw me and slammed on her brakes. I, of course, had been watching the street pretty carefully to see what was going on. The gentleman behind her was in a truck. He had a load of firewood. And with the four inches and the melt that had happened that afternoon, he's put on his brakes and he started to slide. And he had the wherewithal to not slam into her, but to pull out of his lane. And of course, he would have killed me if I hadn't turned and run for my life because I was worried how quickly. I thought in my mind, how quickly is he going to slide anyway even if I took a run? But I turned and ran. When I got to the table, the building, as I ran further to the building, because I thought, what if he comes up over the door? He's, he's on a trajectory that you can't control. So he, um, he was able to stop. I got, and I could not breathe, and I could hardly walk. I was shaking. So that, I turned around and he had his hands in his wheel. And he had stopped, but he was in the middle of what was supposed to be the crosswalk. So I just beg you to consider that, I understand you have some yields to consider. Let's talk about, do we have crosswalks in the winters? Because if we do, we can't see them when there's four inches of snow. And even if you live here, maybe you forget where they are. There are a lot up there. I'm not so sure. It's not, I'm not a highway specialist. I understand that it's several. But I'm not here to tell you what should be done, but there are a lot of crosswalks out there. I think, you know, we're a pretty small stretch with a lot of them. And not every one of them is marked right now. Now, if I were a driver in this town, brand new to this town, especially, let's just take between National Treasure and the Hat Rock. And then across the street between Delaware and Aspen Leaf. Right now, on the north side, there is a yellow sign. If I'm a driver heading northbound, I see a yellow sign in the middle of the street. I start watching for pedestrians. But there, lo and behold, I'm watching that when I'm in a crosswalk. That's barely painted right at the moment.
Right.
It's two thirds painted.
I'll interrupt you for just a second. I would say state law says that, that any, any people crossing at an intersection have to run away. I mean, talking about pedestrians. That's, that's state law. That's a state highway. That doesn't really matter because what we find consistently is people don't have any idea what the law is, as it applies to most, much of anything. I would also say we, uh, we do hope to repaint those crosswalks. But in the wintertime, you're exactly correct. There's no great solution to that. So.
But little yellow signs. What are the yellow signs? What is that called? The yellow, that you just put up? The yellow sign?
Oh, we could do that, but when you plow the street, you can't have them. So.
I understand, but we do miracles around here for everyone. We're still doing the miracles. You know, we do, and I understand what you want us to.
Okay.
I just don't want to get killed by a person.
We will certainly do what we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then one other last thing that I wanted to say is that all day long I get asked for the public restroom minutes. And it's straight across from my building.
Right.
That's not far to look. If there was a decent sign, fairly bold sign that said public restroom, it would sure help.
Okay.
Because from my drawing, I can't see the little tiny restroom sign.
Yeah, we do have a little one marked on those restrooms. Okay.
It is, it is, but if you're down the street, which is what most customers are doing, they're not in the park. If you're in the park, you can see the sign.
Okay.
From across the street, I can't read it. I need to put my.
I think that's a good suggestion. Thank you.
And one last thing, just for a minute, can you give us your name?
Monica.
Monica. Thank you. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you for your listening.
Anybody else in the public would like to speak to city council? Christie?
King Council, I'm here tonight to tell you about a really exciting event that we're hosting next Tuesday. We're going to be having some community discussions upon homelessness in Lake County. What causes homelessness in general? And what communities can do to start working on programs and services that prevent homelessness? We're also going to be doing some focus groups for folks who are experiencing homelessness. And that'll be hosted at St. George's Church from eleven thirty to twelve thirty next Tuesday. Pass out these flyers. Would love if you would come. Would love specifically if fire and, um, and police could come. If you could send your staff. We have like two different events. Would love for you, if you guys could attend. I made the same request to the sheriff's department too. And I welcome any other feedback, maybe EMS. Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Also, I wrote the times wrong, so you'll see that I crossed it out in the pictures. And because I'm super professional.
Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak to city council? You look like you're ready. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you all. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes from May seventeenth and June seventh. Does anybody have any view of these have any changes they would like to make to these minutes?
Thanks for the.
I, I do have a question. This isn't, I, I don't. You know, when Tim Burtman presented to us, was it really fourteen, was that fourteen hundred dollars? It seemed like it was higher than that. But maybe I'm wrong.
One with the pictures?
Huh?
Yes. I think that sounds about right. The numbers were relatively low. I don't think I saw a number higher than like three hundred.
Okay, well, then that's probably correct then.
I, I think that's correct. I have an email from him so we can double check, but I think fourteen hundreds is about right.
In which case, we'll do one at a time. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of May seventeen, twenty twenty two.
Councilmember Luna moves to approve the minutes of May seventeen, twenty twenty two. Phil, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All in favor. Next up, the minutes for June seventh, twenty twenty two. Any changes to those? See, not have an intention, please.
Laritzen moves to approve the minutes.
Minutes for Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty two. Luna, last seconds. Any other discussion?
Because I can't hear you.
That's okay.
Sure we can hear Tracy.
It's okay. My voice is really soft, so don't worry about it.
And, yes. So it is working. Tracy, you, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you guys fine.
Now you're, now you're good. Thanks. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were favored. This time, we have department reports. We're going to start with the police part.
Name is pretty quiet. We had two police recruits graduate from the academy early in May. Maria Corzo, Will Martin, they're currently field training. Both of them are doing fine. That Monday after they graduated, they're available here for their next start academy down in Beckridge. Both of them are also doing fine. No issues. Both out, one thousand two hundred and thirty nine dollars in fines and fees accumulated during the month. Pretty quiet. Twenty four registered section offenders, forty seven catchings, four weeks. Three tickets, somendance, two, to Munich, four, one county court. And one person taking the custody. May was pretty quiet. June is a little busier. About that next time, but.
Okay, could you talk about to Commissioner Lillie Oss? Concerned, can you talk about the incident at the school and, and what the action items were?
Yeah, it was last Wednesday. It was brought to the attention of the schools, the high school administration, that a particular student allegedly had a hit list of people that he was going to cause harm to. They immediately, this went, this came through Safe to Tell. They immediately pulled him out of class. We, our officers responded to the school. Conducted an interview of him, searched his backpack. His mother was there. Determined that there was no hit list. He did not possess any weapons or anything illegal. But there were two videos that were, he put on TikTok that were, that were a bit disturbing. He, he pointed a gun at the camera. But the video wasn't specific enough for us to arrest him or cite him. It's, there were, there were, there were no names identified or groups of people that he was supposedly gonna, gonna cause harm to. He just simply was dressed up in a suit and had these antique weapons that apparently his mother owns, that he somehow got a hold of and made this video and, and pointed the, pointed the gun at the camera. That's troubling, and it's, if not, it's enough to get you suspended and, and have a threat assessment done, which was done today. But not enough for us to place him under arrest. This turned into a social media firestorm. The school district put out some information on, I do believe, Wednesday afternoon about the situation. They were still interviewing people, getting information about it. Thursday, he was not at school. He was at home suspended. And of course, there are rumors and gossip and misinformation on Facebook and, and all these social media platforms. At the, at the moment, some other kid posted on Safe to Tell that he allegedly had a gun in his backpack and was at school. He was in fact, at home, talking to the undershare at that very moment. So it, it looks like these kids are, are, they're pretty tech savvy. And it seems that the, some of them are, are weaponizing Safe to Tell to, to bully other kids and, and put out misinformation. But we, we were, you know, we're obligated to act on that, and we did. We increased our police presence at all the schools last, last week. We had, we had decoy cars positioned at, at every single school facility. And we stepped up our foot and vehicle patrols. On Thursday, I, I communicated with the, the interim sheriff. And he also had his staff relieve us and rotate at the school. So we had a pretty, pretty heavy presence at the schools for those, actually for the whole week, but especially Wednesday and Thursday. But we never, we never did find this supposed hit list. And the threat assessment is, did that today. It looks like he's gonna have to, to go take some, some consoling or some steps before he, you know, before he will be allowed back into school. So that's, that, that's the, uh, the situation.
Okay, thanks so much. And I wanted to speak a little bit on that as well. As far as where the city is concerned. First and foremost, I would say that there is an option available how, for our police department to take in weapons if parents feel that their kids are in potential cause harm or in potential to cause harm to themselves. And we do keep weapons for safety as an option potentially, if we feel like, if you, as parents feel like that's potentially an option to take, right? For safekeeping weapons. Is that right, Hal?
Yeah, I, I told the school district staff that if a parent can't afford a proper storage locker or, you know, whatever, gun safe, that they, they can bring the weapon to the police department. We will hold it for them in, yeah, for safekeeping until such time as they feel that it's safe to have the weapon back in their home. There are, there are a lot of guns. You know, a lot of people own guns in this town. And I think that people need to really pay attention to how they're storing their weapons and limit access, especially if you have teenage or, you know, older kids around. They, some, I don't know, I don't know how his mother stored these guns, but obviously he was able to obtain them. So.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add one more thing on top of that concerning how situation was handled. First of all, thank you, everyone party involved for considering safety of students and first and foremost, putting that forward and making sure the situation was handled appropriately. In terms of communications, unfortunately, I feel the school has had issues with communicating to our parents, especially our Latino parents with everything, not just this. And I think it's on us for whenever we're involved to kind of pick up those pieces where they're currently lacking, to really communicate this. That was not communicated in Spanish at any point, which in my opinion is the bare minimum. A lot of parents and people who work with the schools did not get any texts about the situation, and most of which, including myself, found out through rumors, which is all we all know are very dangerous to just allow. So I think that, and I know and acknowledge that you made an effort to do that to the best of your ability currently, but I think that whenever we're involved in these type of situations that concern our children, we should also try to pick up the tab ourselves and make sure that we are also to our best abilities talking about what these issues are, because we've seen this with the equity work that they've been doing, as well as this most recent safety concern, that unfortunately, the schools, I feel like are inadequate to respond to our Latino community appropriately and get the information out. And I just think it's in our best interest to publicly make as much information that we can publicly acknowledge, knowledgeable and both bilingual. The utmost importance considering that our schools are seventy percent Latino.
I, I, I agree with you one hundred percent. I think that the, I think that the school district needs to take whatever steps they need, need to take to disseminate these, these, these emails that they put out in Spanish, not just English. I was paying attention to the, the police department Facebook page and, and put out a statement on our Facebook page. I also prepared a press release that was taken over to the newspaper. They chose not to publish it, but I did speak to Patrick over there about what was really going on and, and our part in it and all, you know. So I did reach out to the newspaper and gave them a summary of what was going on. But I think you're absolutely right. I think the Latino community needs, the, the stuff needs to be put out in Spanish. My Latino employees tell, tell me that, that most, that a lot of Latinos get their news on Facebook. And so perhaps the, the school district needs to look into creating a, a Spanish language Facebook page, you know? I, I think there's a lot of opportunities for better communication.
Is this a conversation maybe we should be having with the school board at their next meeting?
I think that's, we should know what it is. Um, I think the last one actually was last week, so I would have to check again for.
Okay. Maybe that's an action I.
I fully agree.
Just let me know. Thank you, chief. I do have another question for you. Sorry to change the subject, but I, I think the curiosity question, have we cited anybody into court for vicious dogs? At all?
Yeah, yes, we did.
And was it, was it that mother daughter with the two dogs?
Yeah, I'm aware of that one for sure. Yes.
Oh, there's more?
Uh, there may be.
Okay.
But, but that one definitely, yes.
Okay. And did they show up for court?
Eventually, the, the daughter did. And our, our previous prosecutor
Okay.
allowed her an, an extinction.
Got it. Well, you, you were copied in on the, and so was Lori on the note I sent to the prosecutor.
I, I saw that. I appreciate that.
Trying to set a city expectation that I expect the prosecutor to take this very seriously when it comes in front of her.
I, I, that, that came across very clearly in your message.
My.
Councilmember Laritzen has a question.
Okay. Councilmember Laritzen?
Actually, I just wanted to mention to please chief Edwards that those same two dogs were running loose again on Sunday. I do have a picture I can send you if you need it.
Yes, please send the photo, Tracy.
All right, I will.
I, 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 I'll say that.
You know how I feel.
And you know how I feel. And, but I, I'm, I'm, I've been speaking to city manager Simonson about budgeting for a dedicated animal control officer in twenty twenty three. I've spoken to Chris Floyd, and she has said that they could, would likely help us offset some of the training costs from grants from plan, plan pet hood. So we're, we're doing the best we can with the resources we currently have.
Gotcha. I, as, as you know, I don't think it's gonna change unless we drop the hand wounds of people in terms of the fines that are available and the required training. It's in code. They have to, even on the first offense, they have to go to training in addition to the fine. And the second offense, the fine cannot be less than two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and an additional training. So if we apply that code correctly, we're gonna get somebody's attention. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chief Edwards? Thank you, chief. Next up, fire department. Okay, time's up.
All right. Sounds about right.
You look like a new recruit or something.
Yeah.
Can they?
I was out at the training center. We're just live fire. Yeah. I got an interior with those guys. We had a really good time. It was, it was a really good training. Started about one o'clock this afternoon, so we got a lot of rap, a lot of reps in there, so that was good. It's good training. So I'll, I'll start with apparatus. Truck one, it passed its ladder test. I was very surprised. It must have been the time that the gremlin was running around in there. But it did pass, so that's a good sign for ladder truck. Engine six oh three had some packing issues in the pump. And it needed some pump work done. But it'll be back tomorrow, which it'll be back in service for the community. But engine six oh two, we're starting to have ignition issues again. The pump intercooler light, the radio, and the siren issue. So it sounds like there's like some kind of electrical problem going on with engine six oh two. That's the Dodge.
Six oh two?
That's the twenty twelve Dodge Type six. So I gave directive to the apparatus coordinator to try to, let's get that figured out. Because that's our primary engine, not only for the community, but the one that we sent out on the one as well. So we need to be able to figure out where, where those problems lie and fix them. Cannon Road Four mitigation project. I don't know if you've driven down Cannon Road Four, but it has kicked off with Colorado Conservant Conservation. Andy from Upper Arkansas Watership Collaborative and Colorado State Forest Service have been working together to include a, a shift on our department. We've been down, down there doing some saw work, working our S two twelve skills and helping them clear some of that mitigation down there. So Cannon Road Four, when it's all done, it will be the template on what we want to show the community members on what mitigation really truly looks like. I think when we talk about mitigation efforts in our community, people think it's a clear cut, over, I have any more trees left in my yard. But this is a thinning project that kind of gives the community members an idea of what true mitigation efforts look like in giving first responders and also themselves in the event that there's a fire to be able to get out and for us to get in, to be able to slow down the head of that fire and actually get some work done if possible. And if we have the resources here available to do so. So I'm very excited about that because I think that'll kick off a lot of other mitigation efforts in our community. We can really start thinking about being really fire wise. So that's a very positive thing. The hazmat trailer, the state hazmat trailer is out at training facility. We'll work at. Uh, the hazmat trailer, the state hazmat trailer is out at training facility will work at. Uh, getting recertified in our hazmat technician certifications and our operational level. It's just a trailer that the, the state gives us to be able to train on. Because it has a bunch of different things that we don't have readily available. I just, uh, I talked to Donna about this. I, I just put reimbursement in for the firefighter disease and prevention grant. That was the extractor. So we'll be receiving about fourteen thousand ish, and I'm sorry, I don't have that number in here. Uh, on reimbursement, that should be coming here pretty soon. It was all approved, so it'll be coming back. The type three and the type one, I know you're gonna ask me this.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so the type one, I just got back from Boise to go over the rest of the real true configuration of that piece of equipment.
Is this where we get to guess what month?
You can guess.
Going with October.
October for the type three.
For, oh, the, the, which we know, the type three.
Yeah, the type three, so you'll be off a little bit. It might be a little bit later than that. Which is unfortunate, it, the chassis is not even on the ground yet. So it'll be here in twenty-five days, the chassis, and then it needs to be scheduled in, and then it will go through the. The um, construction process. Now the type one, that's in ninety days.
So I, I'm not laughing about this.
I know, I know, I know, it's uh.
Yeah, well, that's actually good, that's good news.
That's really good news. So I went out there and um, went over all the little details. On how to make that functional for our community for operations, and it went well, it was a great meeting. Um, let's see, CMC update, we just had a meeting actually this morning. And CMC has had gear for the, for the academy itself all over. Out on the Western Slope, over here, and now Carbon Dale. Was able to receive a grant somehow to be able to support their CMC. Fire academies over in Rifle and Carbon Dale, and Carbon Dale actually built a training facility out there as well. So we're gonna get all of the other equipment here locally now. We talked about us being the hub of the fire academy. And then uh, so everything will go through us. Your associate's degree classes, the fire academy, all of that will happen here at the.
Point of store, because that one trailer looked like it was getting pretty full.
Yeah, so the trailer is one thing where it was gonna go back and forth and it is full. You're absolutely right, that gear. The other ones, um, we're cleaning out the training facility to be able to open up some of those containers out there.
I see.
And have a, a specific.
Gotcha.
Area for the, for the equipment there that, that doesn't need climate control. Now, we had a, a, a real in, not a real in-depth conversation, but we had a, a real conversation about. What does the future look like? Because if they're gonna give us two of their pieces of equipment. And bring them over to our training facility, and we have equipment that needs to go to the training facility, where are we gonna store these types of equipment? These pieces of apparatus and everything else that needs to be climate controlled. So we talked a little bit about that, and uh, we're gonna need a temporary solution and a long-term plan on how we go about doing that.
With that in mind, you, you put in the extractor in station two, the one that you're getting the, you know, and it's gonna be busy.
It will be, between that one and the one on the primary station.
Yeah.
So we talked about.
A lot of equipment you don't know anything about.
Yeah, we talked about that as well, um, when it'll be in that long-term planning. Of being able to have the ex- extractors and, and all of that at the actual training facility, in whatever that facility looks like out there.
Alright.
With bays and, and heat and electric and all of that, but that's a long term. Uh, so let's see, station two updates going really well. Uh, they actually installed two of the rush toward days. Uh, finally, yeah, so, uh, so that's going really well. Uh, I know Pro Electric's been out there doing all the electrical, the plumbing, all the rough ends. Going in, so it's looking good, it's coming along very well, so I'm happy about that. The move-in time or finish date is uh, supposed to be August tenth. And we went on two deployments um, already this year. We went to New Mexico and in Colorado, so uh, that's all I have.
Were those real fourteen day?
The, the one in Colorado was only like six or seven.
Okay.
But then the other one in Mexico is full for two.
I was gonna tell you real quick, Susan Matthews was in my office yesterday, and she was asking about station two. Cause she, she was in the formative stages of, of all the planning we did for station two. Yeah, yeah.
She was just swinging through it.
Yeah, just kind of a surprise.
You say, I have, you have any questions?
You saying August tenth with garage stores?
August tenth for completion date of the entire facility. They're rocking and rolling right now.
And that, did you get the garage stores yet or no?
So they're, they're on site and they're finally, yeah.
Alright.
Because we ordered them last November.
Yeah, yeah, I remember them taking a long time.
Yeah.
But is that also the rooms ready to occupy?
That will be. Properly moving in.
Okay, alright, just curious. Any questions for Chief Daley?
Um, this is actually brought to my attention, I know this is outside of city, but figured I'd ask anyways. Um, that uh, there was a lack of fire hydrants at all the three major trailer parks around town, um, inside of town. You know, the specifics of that or?
So the, if, if it's outside of the water distribution system.
Mm-hmm.
Putting in a system like that would be buried cisterns or. Other type of water source that would be able to support the GPM flow out of a hydrant, which is very, very difficult to do. If people in areas outside of water distribution system want to bury cisterns. And be proactive in their HOAs or in, in the actual, you know, uh. Area of residents themselves, they get together and we support that and we get them, you know, the specifications on how to go about doing that. Because I know that it was talked about at Mountain View East and West for, for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that fire that it happened. The ones down at Lake Fork, they're in there, but they're not reliable.
Yeah, that's what I've heard as well. Um, just wanted to get a good idea of what the situation was like up there, so. Thank you for letting me know.
Are there any cisterns at Mountain View East and West, even though there aren't fire hydrants?
No.
They don't even have cisterns. If they have cisterns, you could pump from the cistern, right?
Correct.
Are there any grants available for trailer parks, you know, to put in, you know, fire assistance?
I couldn't say.
Not that you know of?
Yeah, that I don't know.
Any other questions, Christian? So, thank you.
Alright.
Tracy, any questions? Alright, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Nice.
Uh, you, you said thirty days? Okay, next up, I, I, I've written that one, so I'm not letting you go. Uh, street department, uh, as you guys know, uh, Jim Schneider is uh, helping us by coming in two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, he was out today. Um, but uh, but I've been, I've been meeting with, with the street department pretty regularly. Um, and I don't know if I said this before, but I didn't, I'm gonna say it again, the attitude has changed a hundred million degrees. It is, it is remarkable to see. What were you gonna say?
Yeah, I just wanna, wanna add something real quick, um. Mr. Schneider helped us last week dismantle a pretty sizable homeless camp uh, up on the east side. Uh, and we really appreciated the help. Uh, we had some very large pieces of furniture. He took his truck up there and without any kind of complaint, it all helped us out, which I thought was, was.
Yeah, Jim Schneider's leadership is, is irreplaceable, but nonetheless, uh, he is helping two days a weekend. And we do have an ad out uh, for a new street department supervisor. We just keep our fingers crossed and hope we get uh, somebody who, who can. Who can lead the street department uh, and do a good job, but right now their attitude is just terrific. I really appreciate that. Any questions about the report? I kind of looked at it. Um, I could tell you on a total work recap, they're under last year by about twelve hundred hours, so. Not sure exactly why that is, but um.
Even for May?
Uh, pardon me?
I'm looking at the May numbers and it looks.
You have to look at all five months. I, I, I just add up, I add up the five months of, of last year versus.
Yeah.
The total for this year.
Yes, seriously.
So just a comparative note.
I'm just sad it claims, it looks like a lot of that was equipment, perhaps?
We got almost five hundred hours in the February alone.
Of what?
Five hundred hours less this February.
And that could be, you know, we had a very light snow winter. I don't know to what to, I'm gonna treat it, I'm not sure, will even be able to guess.
Good to keep in mind that.
Yep. Any questions about street department? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next up, Animal Shelter. Caitlin, you're up.
Hello, everyone. There's a wasp in my kitchen, so I'm gonna leave my video off and save you awesome entertaining faces. Um.
Is that, is that up for adoption?
No, hopefully not. Hope it'll go away soon. Um, so as you see, we did receive the microchip grant for a thousand dollars from the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund, so. I am in communication with the organization that currently has microchips the most affordable. They're about five, six dollars a pop. Um, and then on May twenty-sixth, we were awarded the Maddie's Fund Bi-Pot Grant, so this gives us seven thousand five hundred dollars. And we're hoping to use those funds um, to hire someone on the weekend that is bilingual. So that we can continue serving our Spanish-speaking community members. We did post it on Facebook. I am in contact with the Colorado Workforce Center, and then. This week, since we've had no interest, I am going to post it online on like Indeed or a similar platform. And we attended the AWAC Virtual Town Hall Meeting because there were recent legislation, lettuce, sorry. Legislative changes, and basically all that summarizes is shelter workers are now legally able to vaccinate. Shelter-owned animals, so only um, animals that we have up for adoption, any animal under a stray hold, we could not vaccinate for rabies. But this will help us, um, overall, my understanding was because shelters are having such a difficult time. With volun- uh, with vets, and you know, vet, the vet industry itself is suffering at the moment. Um, this was a loophole. So that now shelters have more streamlined. Um, we're not, you know, we're not waiting on vet appointments for rabies vaccines, so that's a nice game changer. We have the quick stats there that you can take a glance at, um, more detail of course is in the grid. And then we do submit our monthly stats to the national database. So there's just a nice visual of our statistics and our animal intake so far, and as you can see, it does continue to increase.
I do have a quick question, sorry, I just have to ask. You have, uh, you know, total intakes and total live, um. Uh, outcomes of canines, eighty-five intakes, eighty-six live outcomes, I, what, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it would have been a probably the dog, a dog from January that was from last year, so typically if the. If the intake and outtake doesn't match up, it's from that.
Thank you. I have another question, you know, when you, when you talk about impound, city and county, that's an interesting number. When, when, when you get impounds, are those, how are those coming to you? Are you going and getting them or police department? And sheriff's office bringing you dogs? How is, how are you getting those impounds?
Yeah, so um, in previous reports I have tracked it, we stopped tracking it since the animal shelter is no longer under the police department. So we are civilians and have no legal authority outside of the animal shelter. Um, if dispatch calls us and there's no law enforcement available and there's a dog in someone's yard. Um, if we have the staff, we will leave the shelter to go pick up the animal, but you know, our job is to take care of the animals in our possession. So normally it's gonna be law enforcement or private citizens bringing them in, so I can expand. It's just hidden on the spreadsheet, so I'll expand that again for future meetings, and that way you all can see. Um, and then overall, so far this year, we've had twelve animal impounds from the city and thirteen from the county. So last month it wasn't very even, but historically it, it evens out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Animal Shelter? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, liquor license report, any questions about the liquor license report? Uh, this is a report I haven't seen before, uh, these permit fee reports, where did this come from?
That's the county building.
It seems, comes from the county building. It seems like every report they give us is different every month, so, which is okay, at least they're, they're sharing, you know, some information with us, so. It's interesting.
Uh, could you spam on that? What do you? Like, what does this mean?
Uh, well, she, she's just tried to give us an idea of, of how many permits, you know, and, and what category, you know, building permit fees. So here's a total of what they charged, uh, you know, each month.
And it's from the county, she sends us the report and.
Okay, I understand.
And they break it down by plumbing, mechanical, roofing, solar permits, interesting, uh, and then a, then a grand total, so.
Cool.
It's interesting to see the revenue flow. She used to break it down by city and county, um, but. Okay. Uh, next up, we have the uh, sales tax, we, we've, this has been out for a while, but uh. Uh, again, pretty stunning numbers, um, Lori Simonson says these are gonna crash. Um, I, I, I can't.
Didn't say when.
I have no ma- I have no way to counter man that, that assumption. Uh, because I've been making the same assumption for three years, and it just refuses to happen. Not Tracy, yes, Tracy.
Thank you, um, so I just sent out recently the newest sales tax that we got through the county. And I just wanted to make sure everybody notes that I believe there's a huge error in that report. And the state says no, of course they never make any mistakes. It's, it's a two hundred and one thousand dollar. Um, entry for one line item that supposedly is a truck manufacturer in the city. Which would imply that they sold five million dollars in truck manufacturing. And I've asked Crystal to, she's double-checked with them multiple times. So I just wanted to point that out when you look at those numbers, because it, it's so off. It's, it's ridiculous, and I told Donna, hang on to that money, cause we'll probably have to return it, so.
I did see that string, uh, Donna and I haven't talked about this, but we're not giving it back. Actually, that, that is debit, you know, so that's not really our choice. Uh, thanks for looking into that because it did seem very odd, but I will tell you a story that uh, this happened about. Uh, seven years ago, suddenly three hundred and seventy-five dollars appeared. We got a check from the county. For three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for taxes of unknown origin. And this was not the regular monthly tax report, and uh, they were never willing. Say able or willing to tell us why we got that money, but we, we definitely got the money. It's been a long time ago, but it happened, so I'm not sure what this is about, but uh. Cause this, this next, you're right, this next check's gonna be pretty, pretty substantial, huh?
Yeah, so, yeah, I, an extra two hundred thousand dollars, well, I have.
Well, we're, we won't throw a party quite yet.
Right.
I will just say.
What was you?
A few things. Um, I don't know, you, you might expect a leveling of sales tax. The vibe around town with the businesses is that business is down. At least, it, it's a little early to tell, you know, to project what it's gonna be like at the end of the summer. But so far, it, it's down.
Would you say down or leveling out compared to previous years?
It's down.
Okay.
Numbers are down.
All right.
Um, that's also reflected in the visitor's center. Um, I learned from the tourism panel this morning that today, today being June twenty first, um, they have had less than half of the visitors that they had.
Wow.
In all of June from last year, so.
Interesting.
So just letting you know, um, kind of what's going on with the economics of uh, the local businesses.
I'm surprised at five dollars a gallon for regular.
Yeah, well, I think we're kind of, we were in the pre pandemic. You know, before COVID, uh, I think we saw a pandemic boom.
Well.
As every small mountain town did. And now we're gonna, we're entering into a different economic environment with inflation, gas prices, all that, which is all post pandemic. Moving into post pandemic stage, you might see a little bit of crash.
I mean, we'll say with inflation, definitely see that. I mean, I think gas prices and food prices have been dramatically increasing even within a few days. Um, just month or much more through months. So I think that to that point, that might affect our sales, um, as people start looking for alternatives outside of the county. Um, due to how already higher prices are for groceries as it is um, competitive or comparatively to some counties and other neighboring counties as uh grocery prices. So I wouldn't be too surprised, though that doesn't affect us as much since Safeway's out of our district. That it might reflect with uh, local food as well.
Also, for when we've talked about it, actually, last month, maybe, um, lodging, well, I did, uh, is down, especially at short term levels. Uh, there's, they're seeing a decrease in bookings, so.
Yep. I think that, yeah, the sentiment from uh, there was a one of the contractors for tourism panel, um, saying that the trend is that people still have a priority to travel, but just to do it less and have shorter trips, so.
I will tell you, when I bought my van diesel motor two years ago, you know, diesel fuel is two thirty-nine. And I'm saying that maybe it's gonna be parked for quite some time.
Seven bucks a gallon.
Uh, yeah, well, I'm not going there. Yeah, so uh.
Well, we'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens. I, I think it's gonna keep going up, but that's just, I don't know why I think that, but I, I just, you know, it's strange.
Good hope.
We can hope. Okay, next up, we have the financials. Uh, Donna, any highlights?
Um, my biggest highlight is that starting July first, it's round two of accommodation tax. Looking forward to it. Um, the other things I kind of just looked through here quickly and I want to touch on is um, the, the different budgets. Police Department, um, the line items that they're over, like the vehicle repair was to repair Joe Swire's Jeep Liberty. And everything else really kind of goes on the hiring of new hires. So uniforms, um, physicals, you know, psych evaluations, all of that other stuff is just really bringing in other people. The computer software was a, um, they implemented the digital signatures for the e-citation, so that's why that line item is up. Um, ammunition is up, but we also have Dan Brier out there getting grants for that ammunition. So it's also reflected into the revenue. So it's really, doesn't look all that bad. Um, street department, the only one that still was concerning is the gas and oil. I have, um, did the gallon analysis from last year to this year, and it's about five hundred, five hundred more gallons this year than last year. So um, I have gotten new cards. I've also implemented something where each driver is gonna have a PIN number so that we can actually narrow it down to who's getting gas, not what equipment, but who is getting that gas.
Nice work.
So that's gonna be happening and hopefully this week it'll all be put together.
And that would be across all departments?
I could do it across all departments. Okay. Okay. Um, animal shelter, the only one that really is out of line is the other expenses, but that again is help wanted ads, you know, so that, that is just basically looking for help. They're, they're actually in pretty good shape. Um, fire department, the only thing that I really seen that was out of whack on that was the computer software, which is that um, new program that they brought in that, um, it was a, a software for fire rescue operations. It was a new software program that I think is working very well.
It, yes, it was. There was a little bit of.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, everything looks pretty good. We're halfway through the year. Well, this is May, so not quite halfway through the year, but everything really looks like it's right on track.
I do have one question for the police department. Um, under expenditures, we have US Department of Justice grant. That not be a revenue source rather than an expenditure?
You have to expend it out and revenue separately. Um, Dola doesn't care about revenue. They only care about expenditures. But yes, it is in the revenue side as well.
Okay, and.
Or will be.
This was brought to my attention from someone who felt like it could be a concern in terms of transparency. Is this what we're spending, um, reflected anywhere else from the grants? So for example, this twenty-eight thousand figure from the US Department of Justice grant, is that reflected on what we spent that twenty-eight thousand dollars on? Like.
Well, it was body cams.
Okay.
Um, but it's not in there, but I can sure bring up details.
I, I think that would.
Expenditure.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful just for transparency sake, making sure that um, people know where the money's going. So it's not like a surprise that we have these funds, just something that was brought to my attention. And I mean, they're really small line items. I don't think it's the biggest deal, but just having a description of what they're for would help a lot with transparency.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, they were in the budget.
Yeah.
Um, and as a revenue is an office, offset, yes. But yeah, I can certainly bring up as much detail as anybody wants.
Thank you. Yeah, just making sure that we understand what it's for. So if it's body cams, just putting in parentheses, body cams and or whatever the one hundred and three thousand dollars ones for.
It would, right, it would be a different report, but I can certainly. Okay, dash cams. So that's close. Um, but yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just figured I'd bring it up. It's not the most pressing thing, so you know, don't feel like you're forced to, but I think that their concerns were fairly valid.
But that's why as council members, we ask these questions for our constituents.
Yeah.
If there's any question, right, so thank you. Any other questions for Donna regarding the financials? Okay, thank you, Doc. Next up, we have the bills. I, I do have a question in, Tracy, there were, there were emails this afternoon about the twelve thousand dollar bill. I, have we received that bill? There's a bill for twelve thousand dollars.
No.
And Michelle was asking about it and I don't, I didn't think we'd received it, but.
Um, yeah, I think we have received it, but I guess I I thought, I didn't realize we would have to do the supplemental budget and so we.
That's not a factor. According to Donna, the bill has not been received. Is that correct?
I have not seen it, no.
Okay.
Yeah, forward it to you.
Can we, can we, hold, hold on. So la- last time, the, the process was, it's, the bill went before the Lura Board.
Right.
And they need to approve it and, and recommend to the city council or to the city. So that's the process. So that's probably why we have not received it yet. It would not have been sent to us. It would have been sent to Laura.
We did, we did approve the budget at our meeting last week. But now we have to send that budget to city council.
Right.
So that was gonna be included in the budget being sent to city council.
Oh, you mean the bill was?
Yeah. So you tell me how you wanna handle it.
Send, send the bill to us, please.
All right.
Um, yeah, uh, the, just so everybody knows, we, the lure has to, uh, the city council has to okay the little budget. Um, and, and uh, because we're in a loan agreement, sort of. And uh, so I, it had to be posted for fourteen days. So it will appear on the city council agenda, be on the lure agenda for, for uh, July the twelfth and the city council is in July the nineteenth for the supplemental budget. Okay, and I've, I've sent that supplemental budget out to all the, uh, lure board members. So if you haven't seen it, you'll see it on the twelfth.
And so that'll show up. What's that? That'll show up at some point here, the, the, your expenditures.
Yeah, well, there's a whole separate line item for, for, for you are in our budget.
Right, right.
Well, I was curious about that because I didn't know what the status was. Okay, good. Um, we have those in front of us. Um, anybody have any questions on bills? I, I did see a lot of reversals. Is that normal?
Um, which reversals are you talking about?
Um, particularly they're kind of all over the place, but I'd say on page four in the fire department, there are just a whole bunch of reversals. And I just wasn't quite sure why. I've got even on, even on that page, page four at the top, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight reversals.
And some, well, one of them is avoided check. Um, some of those are credits to um, the visa.
Some of offset charges too, like it's the same, there's a charge and then there's a complete offset.
Yeah, those would have been ones that I probably had to void out and redo.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So then I would find the charge, the offset, and I'd find another charge in there somewhere.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Any other questions about the bills? I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Will Malala move to pay the bills?
Hill seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any intentions? Thank you. Donna, you may pay the bills.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have a discussion about the stop signs on Poplar Pine. We have a lot of public comment. Last time, we didn't entertain any additional public comment. At this time, if anybody wants to speak, too many of the others want to talk about the stop signs on, on pine. Okay, I, I made my feelings pretty clear. When we have that many people in the public, come, come, talk to us and, and have a problem with, with uh, a possible decision, I, my, my tendency is to defer to the public. And uh, whether I, whether or not I think it was a good idea is irrelevant. Um, I'd like to hear from other city council members.
I would fully agree with that. Um, I think that was very clear what should be done and what they felt should be done. So I think it's appropriate that we do as representatives of them what they feel should be done.
Thank you. Tracy?
I agree with that. Um, but I would like to see pine become a one-way stream.
Oh, my goodness. That's bold. I, I would agree that there are a couple of blocks in pine where that probably needs to happen, uh, where it's too narrow with parking up both sides. We'd also talked about maybe just a live parking on one side, uh, rather than a one-way street. So um, I think that's something we, we should consider because I think pine is a problem. Jim?
I'm good with leaving it the way it is.
Okay. And I am as well. Um, we did have a motion and a second and a vote on making that change to pine. It's been a long time ago, uh, so I think we should, I would entertain a motion, uh, to not make the changes to pine. Uh, uh, that, that had been considered, uh, and voted on by city council.
Council member, Malala moves to deny the previously accepted motions by city council to remove the stop signs at Pine Street.
Hill seconds.
And Poplar.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Loretta?
Yes.
Council member Hill?
Yes.
Council member Luna Leo?
Yes.
And Mayor Loving?
Yes. And I'll say again, I really do appreciate people for the community. I mean, I understand sometimes we get people to show up when they're unhappy and that's, maybe we should do it more often just to get them to come in here. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, I really did appreciate all the dialogue that we got around that and uh, and the help we got in, in uh, in arriving at this decision. So thanks to the public for that.
And I will say to follow up on that, that I hope that we continue that conversation because clearly there are problems that need to be addressed from the streets. So I hope to see you all again.
You probably will. Thanks a lot. Uh, this time, we have subcommittee recommendations to city council on five units, uh, for high country developers. I didn't, I didn't prepare a presentation. Uh, we have four people on the committee, Christie Galarza, Amy Tate, uh, Kristin Luna the Al and, and me. And uh, we, we were discussing, we actually went out there and we, we, we had a hard time of all of us, you know, being together at the same time, although we had one meeting where we were all together. And we've come to the conclusion that there's one area out there in phase two that we think is the proper application of what we want to do. Uh, I will say, uh, I finally got to meet and I apologize to everybody. It's been so hectic, but I finally was able to nail down a meeting with, with John Liptoniger. He's been very supportive of this. However, he hasn't been all that bending on the price, and I'll discuss that in a second. Uh, but he's willing to run all the water and sewer lines to the buildings, you know, which is, which could be a big deal for the developer. Uh, so if we, if we could, if we get this land and we make the decision to buy it, uh, and then we, we get a developer, uh, we, we, then we get the cost of the land itself, you know, is, is taken away. We're looking for affordable housing and the cost of all these connections. And so uh, the price that he was willing to accept was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, now I said, well, we're talking about four lots and it was sixty thousand dollars a lot. He said, yes, but I'm willing to connect all these, these uh, water lines and sewer lines uh, to the building. That doesn't offset the tap fees. That's a different, different subject. Uh, and the other thing he was willing to do is we were concerned about the parking behind this. And what he's willing to do is give it us a, an additional ten feet in the right way. They're gonna put up a twenty-foot um, road back there, which they had always intended to do, but he was going to allow ten feet of that. um, road back there, which they had always intended to do, but he was going to allow ten feet of that to be part of our parking solution because we only had sixteen feet. And all this is based on fading west design for a five-plex. Okay? So we had to have something or to wrap our head around. And it may be the best solution anyway, but we'll, we still have to put it out for bid and we'll see what happens. But so we only had sixteen feet from the back of the building to the lot lot. And so he's gonna give us an additional ten feet. So we'll have twenty-six feet for parking across the back of these buildings and that would be, uh, two parking spaces per residence. Uh, that's assuming we do a five-plex that's upstairs, downstairs. Huh?
That would be ten minutes.
Well, that's the other possibility. That would be five units unless we said, okay, each, each downstairs and upstairs are separate units.
Right.
That's, then we could only provide one parking space per, per residence. Uh, but then he talked about allowing us on the other side of that drive is gonna be the, all that parking for the hotel, which is huge. And maybe allowing us an easement for some parking over there. So the conversations were great, but he was, he was a bit unyielding on the price. Um, so I'm not asking for a decision tonight, uh, but I just wanted to kind of report back to you where we are in that conversation. I, I, I guess I'm pleased, uh, that, that, uh, that the design will work and that we'll have the parking we need and that the, the water and sewer lines will be to the building uh, which normally the developer would have to do that. Uh, on the other hand, I wasn't, you know, I guess I'm, I'm not, you know, thrilled to death with the price, but we had set aside, we, we had obligated the possibility of $300,000 to this. Um, so I would like to hear what everybody else has to think because that's where we are right now. And no, nothing's been put in writing. Tracy?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. We're talking about four lots, correct?
Twenty-four foot wide, so a hundred feet wide. The actual building that fading west has proposed to us, not proposed, but, but I just asked him for some, some ideas, is eighty-six feet, eight inches wide. And it's, uh, seventy, I'm sorry, if the lot is seventy feet deep, the, uh, building is forty-six feet deep.
So you're talking about five connected units on four lots?
It would be a five-plex. Basically, when he plats it, he would plant it as five lots. He has to replat a bunch of things in, in phase two. So this would be part of that. That's one of the reasons we wanted to kind of get to this negotiation. You know, so he plats this properly, so we don't have to redo it. That'll be his cost. Um. And all that plumbing will be his cost.
We couldn't squeeze another unit on there or?
Maybe. I mean, that's, it's a good question. I mean, nothing's final. They did show me a, a, a six-plex. Um. I'm trying to remember, it seems like it was just over a hundred feet. Now, could we eke out another four feet out of this, um, and still meet setbacks? Um, I'm not sure, but that, that, that's a matter of I, I'd love it if we could put that six-plex in place.
And that's a, this, um, location that will be right behind the hotel?
Uh, it'll, not right behind it, but it'll be, uh, adjacent to the hotel property where all parking is. The hotel will be kind of over, I'll call it northwest of where these will be. So it actually because the parking lot's gonna be there, these could be unobstructed mountain views, which would be amazing for affordable housing. That's not something that I cared about in all of this, but, uh,
Nice little bonus.
But it could be a real nice bonus because a lot of the homes that they built are going to have obstructed views because of the commercial that's gonna be built in front of them. So that, I hadn't really thought about that, but that's really interesting.
Well, will there be a formal proposal or agreement?
I, I think this has to go out for RFP, yes.
Okay. No, I mean with John.
Oh, yeah. Um, I think there needs, I think we need to do that. I mean, we need to, we need to nail this down and, and, and get a contract or at least just like we're doing with JP Housing Trust, maybe an MOA, uh, with John to make sure that there's no, there are no misunderstandings.
Right.
You know, I don't want to get further down the road.
Okay.
Christian, I'm sorry. Tracy, Christian has her hand raised. We can get back to you in a second. Christiana?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. Um, just a reminder that pursuant to the approval, um, ordinance nine, series twenty twenty-one um, of phase two for the real yard, any development of the, for those five units, those five affordable housing units is supposed to be pursuant to a development agreement with high country developers. Um, so we should talk more about what that looks like.
Are you talking about a, a, a development agreement for all of phase two?
No, just for those affordable housing units.
Specifically for those. Okay.
Yep.
Well, maybe that's, that's the simplest way to go. He's already done the PUD. He needs to plat them. Uh, maybe we should have that, uh, that development agreement in place before the plating takes place. What do you think?
Um, according to the ordinance, it's supposed to kind of caption, happen in conjunction with the subdivision, um, of that phase two. So, um, that's how it was intended, but, um, we could also do it, um, prior to, if we have an idea of what those lots will actually be platted like.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll stay in very close contact with you as we go down this road, but I think we need to go down the road pretty soon. But I, I don't know what his timeline is for, for an SI, for a sub to be subdivision of improvement agreement. Um, I'll, I'll just have, we'll see, see what happens.
I'm hesitant to say this, this is negotiation tactics, tactics. I'll keep it until after the meeting, but and we should definitely consider all our options as we move forward, especially considering the six-plex potential. Um.
Yeah, we might need to eke out a, a little on one side of that lot in order to make a six-plex work. That's assuming, you know, I guess I'm assuming I'm looking at the, the, uh, uh, the, the, the template, uh, for fading west and that, that there may be a completely different way to go about it. I just can't tell.
Right. So definitely meet about that.
Any thoughts on that, Tracy?
Um, the company that JP Housing Trust is using is called the Indie dwell. And they specialize in these modular, you know, kind of Lego land type of developments. So they seem to be the experts in doing that. And they've done quite a few developments down in Denver, if you look at their website. So, um, yeah.
We sit up for RFP, we'll have to make sure that, that indie dwell is on that. But, you know, I think there are a number of players, but, but those are the two that I've heard the most about.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah, I think we should move forward with it. Um. We need to, uh, work on that development agreement, I guess, and, and take it from there.
Uh, I think what I'll do is, uh, you get, you know, Christian involved, you know, uh, get, get the, the basics and, and chilcraft some ideas about some things that we've missed. Uh, not that, not that we would ever miss anything, you know, but, uh, uh, then we'll, then we'll work on that development agreement because, uh, once that's in place, I feel like we'll have what we need. Forty money changes hands, that's for sure. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have a certificate of appropriateness for nine oh three Hemlock. This is residential infill. Um, I'll mention that this went before the HPC because it is in the national historic overlay district.
I think the address is, needs to be corrected.
Okay. Okay. Um, and since this is a COA, now I, I do want to tell you and, and Lori can share, Lori type can share. Uh, we received, uh, just a couple hours ago, some changes to this. Now, HPC can only, you know, recommend to us based on what they had and we can only put in front of city council what we had. So we have two options here. We can go through the COA and make a decision one way or the other. Or we could continue it based on changes to the COA, but if the changes were made, this has to go back to the HPC before it can come to city hi- council if we have a motion for continuance. I just want everybody to understand the rules of engagement here. Um, so, um, how does city, how would city council like to proceed?
I would, I would prefer continuance if there's some changes.
They apparently have given us design changes to them.
Very, very new updated design changes that HBC has not seen. So the recommendation before you from HBC would be what's in front of you and, and not need.
Right. HBC's recommendation was to deny the COA.
Um.
Based on his previous documents, not.
Sure, sure. So I believe, please.
What about having the applicant withdraw their COA?
Okay, uh, Melissa, you have your hand raised. Uh.
Yes, can, can you hear me okay?
Yes, here you're just fine.
Okay, um, I am with Colorado Container Homes for the builder for, um, the proposed build for, um, nine thirty hemlock. And the, the renderings that I sent were just i- an example of what changes could be made because of the meeting, um, with, uh, the HPC. Um, you know, the feedback was that it would be a more favorable, um, or permissible build to them. Um, if it had a roof and if it had siding. Um, so those renderings were more of a, you know, we, we can add those things to it if that, if that's what we need to do to get it approved.
Okay, Melissa, uh, and I don't know if this has been explained to you, there are some design guidelines within the National Overlay District. And this National Historic Overlay District is a very special designation, uh, given to the city of Leadville in nineteen sixty-one. Uh, and it has, uh, some guidelines from the Department of Interior. Uh, so those have to be adhered to. In addition, uh, and you may or may not actually be aware of this, i- if you're not, you can look it up. Uh, the design guidelines will talk about materials that can be used for, uh, infill uh, in, in, within the historic overlay district. So, um, I don't know what the Historic Preservation Commission's opinion of this is gonna be. Uh, if you can simply basically put a building over the building that would exist for a container, the container itself would not meet those design guidelines. Uh, however, if they said to you that maybe they would, uh, consider something that has, let's say, a different skin on it and a, and a roof. Remember, part of the design guidelines say that, that whatever is built has to be in concert with the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, you know, both in, both in its height and its, and its, and its, uh, mass and the look of, of, of it. So, um, are you inclined to withdraw this COA application at this time?
Um, I'm, n- no, we are still looking to get, um, you know, to build on that lot.
No, I, I understand that. If, if we act on this COA, uh, it has nothing to do with anything that you have submitted since the HPC considered your, your certificate of appropriateness. So, uh, we can go forward and consider the COA based on what we knew at that time and what they knew at that time. Um, I would, I would have to tell you based on what I've looked at, what I know, it, it doesn't look good. Uh, you know, certainly not in the National Historic Overlay District. Uh, so we could continue this. Uh, but even continuing it, this COA would, would never, would still sending it back to, to the Historic Preservation Commission still would be a problem for you. I'm, I'm going, I know you want to build, but you're going to have to, to go through the COA process with the Historic Preservation Commission based on new, uh, information as far as I could tell. And city council can tuck me off this ledge if you want.
Oh, well, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, please.
Uh, so if we, if they did not withdraw the COA
Right.
and we deny it.
Right.
What, when can they apply again?
That's a great question. I'm not sure I have the answer to that question, but I, I think there may be a timeline.
Because you may, you may, Melissa, consider withdrawing the application and then applying again with your changes to the HPC. It may be the most expeditious way to handle it.
I, I tend to agree. Christian?
Uh, to that point, is there any limitations on withdrawing and then reapplying?
I don't believe there are any limitations on that, but I, I believe, and I don't remember what it is in code, but there may be uh, a, a, an issue with the reapplication if this is denied. Um, so.
COA technically is good for two years, whatever your decision is. So if it was to be denied, I, it might be.
Well, I don't, I don't want to. Tracy, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think the best course would be to withdraw and, um, reapply through the HPC with their changes.
Okay. Um. No matter what we do, it's all, it's gonna have to go back to the HPC unless we simply deny it, in which case it would not go back to the HPC. Uh, Melissa, uh, are you willing, you know, we're gonna suggest to you that your best course of action is to withdraw the certificate of appropriateness application uh, to city council and that you reapply to the Historic Preservation Commission with the new details that, that you, uh, have now.
Um. Okay, so then in, in that, in doing that, are we gonna have to continue to pay the application fee over and over again?
No, I don't think there's any reapplication fee. I think you already have, I, you know, I'm just gonna say no.
We just did new resubmitted plans and go back through the process of public notice and public meetings.
I do have a question for you, Melissa. Have you submitted to the building department?
Yes.
Okay, that's a different consideration. Don't get me wrong. The, the, the building department could care less about the historic nature of this, of this, uh, property. Uh, so that's not an issue for you. And so you don't have to reapply to the building department. Um. Uh, you, you may have to, um, resubmit your plans to them, uh, for the facade. Um, so I guess at this time, are you willing to withdraw this application?
Uh, yeah, I have another question though before I answer, uh, that completely. Um, so before even submitting all of the submittal, you know, documents to get the permit approved, you know, I have had many conversations, um, with Lori who was really helpful, but, um, you know, she also was kind of alone. And then, um, a lady named Sarah Dallas came in to help and I had a lot of conversations um, with a lot of different design, you know, plans and I, I got all the guidelines. Um, but unfortunately, the HP, the HPC guidelines or the design guidelines, they had a lot to do with renovating, um, you know, historical buildings that already existed. Um, but there wasn't a ton of information or a ton of black and white kind of design rules for new construction, um, at least, you know, reading through them. So.
Yeah, we, we do have those and, and, and you're, you're welcome to, to come get them from us. Um, in terms of, of residential infill in the national overlay district, there are design guidelines for the build, so.
Okay. Um, well, yeah, I mean, I guess if that's our course of action, if, if we're, you know, just gonna be denied anyway, then we'll go ahead and withdraw.
Uh, sorry to put you through this, but this is, uh, it's a very sensitive matter in terms of, of, uh, an historic city and one that is particularly one that has the national, uh, historic overlay district. Uh, these are rare, actually. There are only six in Colorado. And, uh, and these are very, very, uh, honored. For us, uh, and, and we, we do take it seriously. So, um, good luck, uh, with your reapplication. We will certainly look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. At this time, we have, uh, resolution number twenty-eight, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving a land lease agreement with community. a land lease agreement with Community Banks of Colorado for the lease of a parking lot at one thirty one East Fourth Street. There is a glitch, but 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 we're but Christian agreed that we should go forward to this resolution. And the glitch is we have to resubmit. There's a minor change. We have to resubmit to the bank. But this resolution will take that into account, but it won't change any substantial matters in terms of the lease with community banks. All of those have all been agreed to. Christian, I had to add a caveat. As we know, you know, encumbering future city councils on a long term lease requires a certain wording under table to make sure that that we're doing this correctly. That's 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 his next step. But right now, and and Christian can speak to that. Christian, would you like to speak to that before we go on with the resolution?
Sure, I can. The la- very last addition to this lease, as the mayor pointed out, is the addition of language regarding annual appropriation. And so the lease would be subject to annual appropriation. We needed to add that in. And then so that's that's the last thing to have the bank review and approve. Otherwise, I believe that they've agreed to the rest of the language.
Thank you, Christian. I would say the bank has been very willing to work with us on this. I've been actually pleasantly surprised by what we've been able to accomplish and 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 being able to have this parking available. So I'm I'm pretty tickled. Any thoughts on the resolution itself from city council? Then I would entertain a motion, please.
That's member Luna, that wants to adopt Resolution number twenty eight, series of twenty twenty two, Resolution approving the land lease agreement with car banks of Colorado, Community Banks of Colorado for the lease of a parking at one oh one three one East Fourth Street.
Do I hear a second? Hell, seconds. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leon?
Yes.
And Mayor Lava?
Yes, as soon as we have this lease completed and we send them a check, we'll put up the public parking signs. We have, I think about ten public parking signs. So we're in good shape there.
What about any kind of painting?
In the lease, it gives us permission to make improvements to that lot without. So the the answer to your question is I'd like to improve it. I don't think I want to pave it, but I would like to put rotor mill down on it. In which case we can paint lines on it. They 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 won't last, you know, but maybe one summer season, we'd have to each season. But yeah, we we need to do that just for efficiency of that lot. Otherwise, people have no idea where to park. So, yes.
And then the other lot that we purchased is that last year, beginning of this year, whenever that was?
It was beginning of this year.
Okay. A little confused as to what part of that we own.
It it's 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 basically a sliver. I mean, it's twenty five feet by a hundred twenty seven feet.
Is it closest to the Western Hardware?
It's directly off that alley.
Okay, so there is a sign there currently that says first row parking reserve for Western Hardware.
That wrong.
So we need a public parking sign there too.
Well, yes.
And some paint, hopefully.
Well, again.
Well, we would have to pave that.
We can rotor mill it and and really compact it. We have a roller, actually. We've done some cool things with the street department of the years. We have a roller. We put rotor mill down and we could really delineate.
That's a.
Very clearly.
That's twelve slots.
It's twelve, maybe thirteen. We'll see what we can put in there.
So that's, I mean, that's not, nothing, that's.
Well, no, 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 I I think it's good. It's good. And and we I I called twice to the elves and I they they just don't, I'm gonna have to go down there and just arm wrestle JR at the old because I'd still like to get an agreement on the back half of the old parking lot, which would be quite a bit of parking as well. And do a similar thing to this. Use this as the template for agreeing with the elves.
Good, very happy. Did this and it could go a long way to easing some of our parking woes.
Okay, thank you. Our next one, this has to do with the family. The the pay family medical leave insurance. This shows that we're opting out, but I don't think we'd made that decision last time we talked. So I think we can, we can go either direction with this. I'd like to hear from staff.
Sure. So the the reason it's drafted the way it is, is that if you take no action, you are automatically in. So you don't need a resolution opting in. You only need a resolution opting out. So that is why and Christian, Christian and I have spoken and we are on board with the her recommendation. And I'd actually like her to explain her recommendation because it does require a little background to understand exactly how best we can benefit our employees, which is on its face, a little backwards, but it but actually is, I think, the best course of action for our employees. So.
Sure, thanks, Lori. So the recommendation in your packet materials and what the resolution reflects as it is written in the packet is that the city would opt out, but then pay all or a portion of the employees premiums for the employees who decide to individually opt into the program. So that's a recommendation. And the reason for that recommendation is because of a couple of things. So and just to back up a little bit, remember that the family and medical leave insurance program is a state run program. And only that's all employers in the state, there's actually a chart in your council communication form are required to participate in some way. The one exception is local government employers. They are the only ones who have the option to opt out of the program and not pay employer or not pay premiums. And so this again gives employees a benefit for taking up to twelve weeks of leave for certain specified reasons, caring for a new child, an employee's serious health condition, an employee's family members' serious health condition, arrangements for a family member's military deployment or safety needs or due to impacts from domestic violence or sexual assault. So just a reminder that that's what this is all about. If the city opts, well, and in fact, if you take a look at your options, you have the option to do a few things on page four and into page five of your council communication form, which is page one hundred and forty six, two hundred and forty seven of your council packet. You can opt out of the family program. The city would pay no employer premiums. And the city could choose to not pay any portion of their employee premiums for the employees who opt in because if the city opts out, individual employees can still opt into the program and to get those benefits. The second option is opting out of the family program and paying some or all of employee premiums for employees who opt into the program individually. And you can also choose to help facilitate those payroll deductions for your employees who opt in. You can choose to opt into the program and pay the employer premium portion only. And that would cover none of the employee premiums, which are again pre-tax deductions from their paychecks. Or you could opt into the family program and pay for a portion of employee premiums. Or all of it. So those are kind of the four options. And the reason of recommended option two, which is to opt out of the family program and pay some or all of employee premiums for those employees who opt in and also facilitate, help facilitate their payroll deductions is because if the city opts out, employees can choose for themselves to opt in. They can make that choice to have that deduction come out of their paycheck and get that benefit. Employees who opt individually opt in, even if the city opts out, will still get the same benefits. They'll still get the twelve weeks and they'll still get the weekly payments that they would be getting even if the city opts in. In addition, the city could use the money that would normally or that would go to employer premiums to help cover employee premiums. That way employees would have less to pay or nothing to pay in order to receive this benefit. And so using just the estimate that Donna gave us, it was around ten thousand three hundred and sixty five dollars. I would say anywhere from ten to twelve thousand dollars is probably a good estimate. If the city opts in, that would be the cost to opt out and help cover all employee premiums who opt in or to just pay the employer portion if the city decides to opt in. So it's a little confusing. Ask questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Question. Why wouldn't every municipality choose option two?
As far as, as far as my firm's clients go, I think all of them that I know of have decided to opt out and let their employees decide whether to opt in or not. Because it is a deduction from their paycheck. They want the employees to be able to have access to that benefit or at least choose to have access to that benefit for themselves. I don't know which ones are choosing to pay some or all of the employee premiums, but I know that a lot of them are opting out.
So obviously, if you opt out, you save yourself, let's just say, twelve thousand dollars, round number. And you're going to use, you could opt use some of that twelve thousand dollars to help employees who opt in offset some or all of that cost. So to your point, Tim, I wonder if the legislature even considered the loophole that they that they went, nonetheless. Here's what I, here's what, looking at this, I would like, I I hate to ascribe zero value to any any benefit if I can help it, because when you do that, everybody will just want want to have it, even people who may or may not need it. So I'm going to suggest that that if we opt out, then we could we could in the resolution pay fifty percent of any employees need or or will want to want to opt in to the program itself. So that's just my thought.
My thoughts are, I'm worried that if everyone to be this loophole, I know we're level smaller. Not quite the same as those bigger areas, but do you think that this might eventually lead to like the collapse of the program?
To that a little bit. So, like I said earlier, and I I'm sorry that I didn't emphasize this, but it's local government employers only who can opt out of this. Private employers do not have the option of opting out. So the program will still be funded even if all local governments opt out. And there's, there's one situation where a private employer could opt out, but they would have to create their very own private, it's basically system that looks either just like this or substantially similar to this program. And it has to be approved by the family division in order for them to opt out. So I don't know what that would look like cost wise for private businesses, but I imagine this is just a guess, that it's probably more cost effective for them to actually opt in instead of having their own private program.
The other thoughts? I mean, if we do opt out, which I I don't know, I guess me thinking long term feasibility seems kind of foolish, to be quite honest, stopped out. Because I would hate to see those benefits be taken away then in the future because the state deemed it suitable or unsustainable. If we do opt out, I find it also hard to believe that we wouldn't cover all of the costs of employee. Last thing I'd want is for an employee to have to opt in out of require or like personal needs or emergency and then have a whole debacle about like, oh, how the hell is my budget going to look now? You know, I was planning for this to be my budget, but now I have this family emergency. We weren't forced to opt in, so I couldn't plan ahead for this because my budget looked a certain way. Now my budgets are going to look differently. I think that it's in our best interest if we do opt out to pay full. And quite honestly, even if we opt in, in my opinion, to pay full of the coverage of the employee, I don't think that there's any reason we shouldn't, to be honest. I feel like that's, we owe it to our employees to pay for full and. Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to listen, Tracy.
Thank you. Um, Greg, your option, I don't see that as one of the options. I think that that would be opting in and paying, like, I don't see that option of opting out but paying a portion of somebody's premium.
Yeah, it's option two, Tracy.
No, that just says that we facilitate their payroll deduction, but it doesn't say that we pay part of their premium.
Does say pay some or all of employee premiums for employees who opt in.
Oh, okay, you're right. You're right. I skipped right over the first zone. I like that. I like that.
I mean, on that note, I have a question. Would option to say someone does face one of these emergencies, give the ability to opt in in immediate effect?
Yeah, what's the timeframe for that?
Yeah, what's the timeframe between not being opted in in the beginning of the year? But then having, let's say, a family emergency, someone dies or breaks a leg or something. And you all of a sudden feel the urge and need to opt in.
I'm not sure that it works that way. I would have to, I would have to look. What I can tell you about the timeline is that premiums begin to be paid in January of twenty twenty three and benefits begin to the benefit from that program begins in January of twenty twenty four. So there it's still a little ways out to actually start getting these benefits for employees. And the point of making this decision earlier on this year is to give employees, you know, a good chunk of time to choose whether they want to opt in or opt out by the time those January deadlines and start dates and so on for both premiums and then later for when benefits start, they can make those decisions well.
So if we opt in, we start paying the premiums in twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
Through the balance of twenty twenty three, but 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 it does the the employee also have to be paying their part in twenty twenty three, but no benefit until twenty twenty four?
That's right.
That's very interesting. Okay.
They have to get all of those funds, I imagine, started before they can actually get the benefit going.
You know, I I I could go in the way of this. I I I understand Christian's thought process around if we believe in a program, you maybe we we should be willing to 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 fund, help fund it. I just don't know which way we go. On the other hand, the loophole they've left gives us for 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 reduced amount of money, the ability to opt out, but still help our employees with their premiums. So I can see both sides of this. When do we, in what timeframe do we need to make a decision on this? Is this something that you feel we need to make a decision tonight?
If you want to hold off on the decision, you can. The original reason that we were having the work session in June and then this resolution before you in June is because there's language in the statute saying that a decision by a local government to opt out had to be done a hundred and eighty days before a certain timeframe. And the family division has issued information recently saying that, no, no, no. Don't worry about the hundred and eighty days in twenty twenty two. Don't worry about the hundred and eighty days in twenty twenty-two. Um as long as you tell us. Uh what your decision or tell us if you're opting out by uh before January one twenty twenty-three. Then you can make the decision at any time in twenty twenty-two, so.
I'd love to have a full city council conversation. I mean, there are four of us here, we have a quorum, but. You know, I I I'd love to uh to hold off a little bit on this if if it's appropriate.
You sure can.
Tracy? Jim?
Yeah, I'm just.
You playing angry birds?
Well, no, I'm looking at the program, it's on a Colorado, uh. It's on the Colorado dot gov website, and I'd like to look into it a little more, I guess, but um. I don't see why my my mind would change from selecting options.
I I I just like a a full body discussion with a full city council. And it might even include the 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 seat that is currently vacant when that time comes. Uh which which I hope will be in the next uh uh four to six weeks. Johnny, you okay with that?
Yeah, yep, as as long as I know when uh you guys want to put this on um an agenda in the future. Uh and can be prepared for that, then that works for me.
Don't we have to fill this vacancy within the next?
Well, so uh yes, I was gonna make that in the city administrator's report, but I just realized that we didn't have that on the agenda. So I was gonna beg forgiveness at the end to talk about that. At the end of the meeting, after you.
We're already at the end.
We hope so. We've got seven minutes.
Yes, so you do need to uh the, yes, we need to decide on the vacancy for Ward Two at your next meeting. It will be on the agenda. We have received a letter, a a letter of interest and another person who might be interested, so. Yes, you will be voting on that at your next meeting.
So by the end of July, we'll have a full, hopefully, city council. Thank you. That's what I, that's what I was asking.
And will we be voting solely based off of this process works, solely based off of the letter of interest or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And those people can come present to us, or they should uh come speak to us. Uh about about their desire to be at city council and then um. Then we we take a vote. And that is.
It's not a secret vote either.
Well, it has been, I we've done it both ways, which I never understood. We have certainly done secret votes before.
Do we have, well, not for the last three we haven't.
Oh, really? Okay, well, okay, could be wrong about that. Christiana, when we vote uh uh for a new city council member, does that have to be an open vote? Or is that a closed vote?
I would say that the the actual vote itself, at the very least, should be at a public meeting.
Should be what?
At a public meeting, in in public.
I understand it's at a public meeting, but we've done it both ways. We've had, we've had, we've ta- taken the votes and and then we've had the city clerk. Tell us what the tally is.
But you also write your name by your vote, so it's recorded in the minutes who voted for who.
No matter what it sounds like.
Before, I just wasn't sure how we're gonna proceed.
Yeah, yeah, let's, we can, we can definitely work that out before it actually happens.
Okay, well, I would like to know the answer to that, because we've done it both ways, that I like to know what's what's. Okay. Thank you very much. Um at this time, we have the public meetings planner.
Do we want the administrator to?
Yeah, I was gonna beg for forgiveness at the very end.
Blank number twelve.
You get the blank number twelve.
You're in timeout.
Yeah.
Uh we do have on the twenty-third, which is this Thursday, we have the joint meeting with uh the B O C C and SCED. To talk about community guidelines, and there are several other things on that agenda, so it actually is a, it's actually an agenda.
Yeah, and so I, uh Jackie Wellhand wanted me to uh inquire about our status of a quorum. For that meeting, which is Thursday, this Thursday. Uh it is uh an important meeting, sort of the culmination, or one of the culmination of all the work that you've done so far on that housing elements. And uh we will hopefully have the intergovernmental agreement. A at least a uh hopefully a a finalized draft for your consideration.
When are we gonna get that? I mean.
I I understand. Well, I have, I have begged Christiana, I gotta. Notice that the I G A needed to come first, rather than the community guidelines. And the establishment of the regional housing authority earlier this week. So Christiana, I begged her, I sent it to her today to ask her to review it. Uh she will re- drop everything and have it reviewed tomorrow. So I were, yes, it is, uh we're always, we're always scrambling um to make sure you'll have everything you need.
Can you send this to my personal email, please?
Do we have your personal email? Okay, yeah, so we. Right, so.
We can, but that needs to get straightened out. It shouldn't go to your personal. That's that's the problem.
Yeah.
What, you you're not getting your emails?
No, I I am, it's just difficult for me to manage since it's on a different system.
Oh.
Um so I would like to get it, my personal, I can like work on it on my phone while I'm.
Then I would suggest we send it to both.
Yeah. Both would be most appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
So, Ken, getting back to the Jackie's question about attendance on Thursday. Uh can, are all of our council members who are in attendance tonight make it on Thursday?
Yes, I can be there.
Yeah, that's at six o'clock, right?
Yes.
We don't need to be there for the ten o'clock, that's.
That's.
No, the joint meeting is in the evening, is the six o'clock, correct?
And that's here.
And will that have, will that be in person and a Zoom option? Why are they doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I didn't see Councilmember Lawrence, and are you?
I'm, I'm just wondering why they need a quorum, is this some kind of action?
Uh the potential, well, there is the hope that the I G A, you will review the I G A. And give the I G A the thumbs up, so that's, that's.
Wouldn't we approve that in a city council meeting?
Well, it's a joint special meeting.
It would be a city council meeting if we have a quorum. I mean, you know, it it would also be a B O C C meeting, so.
Correct.
Would just, just would be, yes.
Uh I will say at a time, actually, Tracy, I'll let you answer if you'll be there.
Yes, I guess I will.
I I will say I have time, I've personally invited Noah, so who I personally trust as. An expert in this more than I ever could be, so I. Hope that we're open to listening to him, uh the city's part.
Okay.
Great.
Do you have anything else you'd like to?
I I do have a few uh things, so. Um also, coming up at your next council meeting is a very important decision on the Community Justice Center. So uh that, we're hoping to have a vote on the city council's commitment to that at the next meeting. Because that uh really, the county needs that decision soon in order to prepare their planning. Correct. So what we would like to have for you by then, and I'll work with Commissioner Fiedler and whoever else we need to work on. Um is essentially some of the parameters for what the city's commitment would look like. Commissioner Fiedler presented that in the last meeting, some types of deal points about what the city's commitment would look like. And what the city's voice in the process would be. So I think that's really important for you all to have to make. Probably one of the biggest decisions that you're going to make as, financial decisions you're gonna make as council members for a pretty long time. So just what, teeing that up, so if you do have questions, you have concerns and anything that's presented to you so far. You you will really be needing to make that decision the next meeting. So if there's information you need from me or the county or the project managers or anyone. Um please reach out so that we can be prepared to make that decision the next meeting. Um other things that I had my list, yes, you're gonna vote on the Ward Two vacancy at your next meeting. And um one thing that Commissioner Mudge wanted me to mention just publicly is the Summit Stage Ledville Link. Is still not charging fares for rides that she confirmed uh last week. That they will not be collecting fares until further notice, so she wanted me to make that public announcement. One of the other things that will be coming up for your consideration is a discussion about e-bikes on the mineral belt. And what types um potentially of e-bikes the city might want to permit. And we will need to do a little housekeeping on the mineral belt. Our speed limit in our city code um indicates the speed limit's twenty-five miles an hour. That should not be the case to be consistent with, um well, i- it it should be fifteen miles an hour. My understanding is the county's speed limit is fifteen miles an hour, so we. Correct.
Okay.
I personally feel like at fifteen miles an hour is probably a better speed limit. So that is what's coming up. Uh the. One other point, uh issue we wanted to talk about is, there's been some questions about um the placement of some items on. Uh the sidewalk on Harrison Avenue and some questions about that, so we have gotten some clarification. Uh the mayor and I were able to get some clarification today from C dot that. There, they consider their jurisdiction to be the um, I'm gonna call it street from curb to curb. And they defer to the local jurisdictions from the curb to the buildings. So that means that um I've spoken with Christiana, that means that our sign code regulations would. We would be able to enforce those along Harrison Avenue, and we will be enforcing those going forward. And um that we will need to clarify anything we need to clarify with anybody who's placing. Portable signs along Harrison Avenue.
I would suggest, it based on our our conversation, it was C dot, uh we should include those in our permitting, sign permitting process. You know, that that he, in my, in my opinion, based on that conversation, he has given us uh the permission to do that.
Right, and we have in our um chapter seventeen uh seventeen point eight oh, we do have our regulations on portable signs. Within right-of-ways. The real question was, was it our right-of-way on the sidewalk or was it C dot? C dot has made it clear, they def- going to defer to us, so our portable signs within the right-of-way will now be regulated under the city code.
We could also regulate newspaper stands.
Well, they should have permits, so technically, yes.
Precisely, yes, uh which has not been happening before, so uh I was very pleased with that conversation.
Yep, it was really good to have clarity on that, so that is my uh report. Thank you.
I have a question.
Please.
Do we own a house on Street?
Wow, I can't believe.
That's such a minor detail.
We do, yes, uh because yesterday was a bank holiday. Uh that deed is, has been reported today and uh we are, yes, the mayor and I did. The walkthrough uh yesterday, which is very thorough, all the repairs were completed to our satisfaction. Uh there was one item that was not caulked, which I understand was caulked today. So there was one uh fixture that needed caulking, and that was the only thing that hadn't been done. We have invoices and we've inspected all the work and.
Yeah.
Uh it looks great, it looks great.
Uh I I would have to commend Lori on her thoroughness. She had all the paperwork. And she walked through, I was just spectating, you know.
The mayor wouldn't let me have a clipboard, so. But it 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 really looks nice. Um they redid some of the paint on the exterior, they fixed the soffit, the deck looks, looks really nice. I mean, we definitely have some cleaning, maybe some um stuff to move out of the backyard. There's some, there's some legwork on our part. And then, of course, we'll have to schedule the conditional use permit um hearing, but.
And we need to put in place some rules, regulations, understandings.
We've got some.
Parking, uh you know.
Yeah.
We have to do it pretty quickly.
And we have to also find the manager, no?
We, well, that's a good discussion, yes, and and whether we hire a property management company. Or um there has been discussion potentially, and we would, I would have to circle back with the housing authority. Is whether or not they might be interested in managing it for us. But I do not think that cities are in a position to be a property management company for rental property. I've done that before and it is, it's um. It's better to have one point person, and we do not have that one point person in the city, so I I think. That would be a good idea.
I would fully agree.
So uh what would be an ETA of someone actually being able to live in in the house?
So what we, we need to do some legwork before we schedule the conditional use permit hearing to make it a multi-family home. Uh I wanna work on a parking plan, we wanna get a lease agreement, you wanna get uh some of the good neighbor agreement. Parameters in place, so I will. I think I would like to talk to Lori and talk to Christiana about, you know, the earliest possible dates. We could have that C U P hearing. And I do think it probably needs a good cleaning, so month. Hopefully at the month. Yeah, okay.
July twenty-seven?
Yes, we have that three hundred Tom Star C U P coming up on the thirteenth.
Gotcha. All right. Thanks. Well, I I um. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Christiana, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention really quick, as far as the um notices for the C U P hearing and everything for eight oh nine Spring Street. Um I I I would build in a couple of months at least to get that done. Um I think that the amount of legwork um upfront uh to to get everything in place. Um and ready to go for the C U P is um a fair amount, um just with all the documents and everything. And so I would just, I wouldn't anticipate a a month. I think I would anticipate like more like two or three months. Just to head up.
We were thinking tomorrow, but that's okay.
Thank you for letting me know.
Uh for me, the next two days will be the Colorado Municipal League, I'll I'll be back each evening and I'll have my computer in my uh phone with me. Uh we're going to Los Angeles and and Lori will be attending some of those as well. Um but uh it's in breakfast, so just I'll go over in the morning, come back in in the afternoon, we'll have, we have evening meetings. P N Z tomorrow evening and then uh the the joint meeting on Thursday. And I would also say, uh next week, I'm going to be somewhere on a motorcycle, so I won't be here. And I will have a phone with me, but the chances of me answering are pretty slim.
I'm sorry, you you said next week you're gonna be in the emergency room?
Yes, I I said, it's it 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 ha- it has to do with uh organ, organ donor, uh you know.
So, no meeting next week?
Not, not that I know of.
It's gonna be a Tuesday without a meeting.
We had talked about possibly and and uh Dana Miller said she was probably gonna be. Uh in in uh severely hungover from travel, I don't know what that meant either, but uh.
Oh, believe me, I'm good with no meeting, that's fine. Trying to encourage anything.
I have one more thing I wanna talk about, glad Nancy's here. Um I've been thinking about, we've been, we've been trying in a variety of ways, business after hours going. Again, for our business community, and as they're going around and they're talking to business people. And in the uh B R and E uh surveys, a lot of business people are saying, you know, we want, you know. We want uh business after hours to come back, so I was thinking about, hadn't really talked to Nancy about this yet, but putting a plan together where Main Street. And the city would just start doing business after hours again. And uh we have a number of people have raised their hands and said they'd like to help with that. Uh and this is not a decision point at all, but I wanted to let you know that that I. I think those should be reinstated. They were amazingly popular, great networking for business people all over the city. And uh they died uh even before the pandemic, uh but they're really dead now. And we've tried to encourage um certain people to to re-energize them and it hasn't happened. So I think that uh I would like to take that on, uh so that's all, just, just a thought. Okay.
Can I bring up?
Council reports.
I was just gonna bring up the E V charging station again.
What about?
When's it gonna start working?
It is working.
It's working.
Oh, it's working.
In fact, the woman, the woman who actually, the woman who is over Energy Colorado. In fact, the woman, the woman who actually, the woman who is over Energy Colorado charged her car with it on Friday. Now, I say that, I I I'd be a little bit snide, but but the truth of the matter is it just got fixed on Thursday. And, uh, and and when I told her that, we were having lunch and she was here for the whole tour with the, with the, uh, with the Herald Democrat, which was fabulous, since it's early. They were the Herald Democrat, they walked around town, they were the Tabor House, they went to the House with the Eye. This was History Colorado. Dola was there, uh, Main Street, State Main Street Representatives, and this woman Christine with Creative, uh, Colorado Creative Industries. Well, it turns out she's over the Colorado Energy Office. And when we were talking about the charging station had been down for months, she was ticked off. And so she says that can't ever happen again, so, uh, but it is fixed and they had to order a part, but they said they've got it fixed now. They'll replace that part in about two weeks when they get it.
Okay. Is it chart, is it, um, charging people money?
No, it's not. And she told me how to do that. Actually, it was a great, great co- I was so glad she was there, because she was able to to share with me some stuff that no one else had shared, so it was good. Cool. So thank you for asking.
It's not just a fixture anymore.
It's not just a guaranteed open parking space.
Any other council reports?
Uh, yes. The more I work, the more eviction notices and the more, um, potential evictions, um, at Full Circle we've been experiencing. I can't tell you the specific numbers, but just within this last week, there's been an increase of more than twofold.
What's driving it?
Um, inflation, uh, with, I mean, this is all speculation. I don't actually know for sure, but our best guess is inflation coupled with the lack of increase in pay. Um, rent prices, some, just a level problem, or United States problem have been increasing dramatically month through month. Um, a lot of, and this is true, and, um, some places, I can't say if this is true here, so this is wild speculation, but a lot of landlords have found that it's easier to, um, push these prices higher to evict people to get a new lease in place where they can raise the prices even more dramatically. That's been presented in America previously. Um, so it might be a good combination of many things. Um, right now, a lot of people don't have options and places to go, so the increase of rent, uh, with the limited amount to no options for people, it seems appetizing for some landlords who might want to take advantage of that. Um, you know, it's definitely a huge mixture of things, and it's unfortunate that this is the world we live in where people are losing places that they've lived in for over thirteen, fifteen years because of the increase of rents, because of selling, because of whatever it is, but uh, it, it's sad to see our community slowly deteriorating away, uh, because of these things and now we're trying our best to get them connected to the right resources, but it's becoming extremely dire, and I'm glad that we're moving forward as much as we can with uh, the options we do have available for affordable housing, and I hope that we consider more movement on that, because it's seeming worse and worse by the months and weeks.
That's to be really discouraging.
I mean, even within our own local employees, it's like what the actual hell's going on to where we're seeing double, if not triple, the amount of evictions week through week. And have these notices go out, it's it's destroying, um, to say the least. And these are community members that we all respect and love and cherish and families that we all respect, love and cherish. It is very disheartening to see and experience even secondhand. I can't imagine, and my heart's out for those families who actually do have to go through that reality.
You know, it's double discouraging, is we came out of the pandemic with zero evictions.
Yeah.
Pending, you know, we did, as a community, we did such a good job. Do you think we need to re-energize somehow, yeah, that needs committee? Is that, is that a possibility?
I mean, it's, I don't even know if that's a problem, because I mean, I I can speak for Full Circle. We're getting a lot of people accepted and getting them the help that they need through the state funding.
Right.
It's just such a high amount of people that are in this situation that it's like, that maybe don't know that these are the options and, you know, own some responsibility that we haven't launched yet. You know, uh, the Family Resource Center hasn't launched. That'll hopefully, fingers crossed, be happening next month. Um, to be a little bit more public. Um, we're worried about if we do launch, what does that mean for our staff and how much time am I gonna spend going through E R A P meetings instead of advocating, or our staff are gonna be going through those E R A P meetings instead of.
Cause E R A P responsive?
Yes, I will say they, as a program, are wonderful to work with, they work with us, with the landlords. Figure out every situation. The only time where we don't, can't use that is any of our community members who aren't documented, and that's when we go through the U, uh, through the Unmet Needs Committee.
Right, yeah. Is there, there's no funding left, the Unmet Needs Committee, is there?
Uh, I think there is some funding left. Uh, like I said, most of the people do end up actually going through E R A P. So, funding wise, I think we're good with my talks with Stephanie Cole, who runs Full Circle, the E R A P, or not E R A P, um, Unmet Needs Committee money is fine where it's at right now, which is hopeful. I don't know if that's gonna sustain, but it it's more so the, just in, like, just I have no other words to describe, of an insane amount of people who are like, I can no longer afford my rent. I can no longer afford to live here because of the rent, because of the gas, because of the food increases. I know that this is an national problem, but it is affecting our community greatly, and at least I at work have noticed it, and it's I mean, it's unbearable. It's taken a toll on our community and I I'm at a loss on what to do, and I, I mean, that's part of the reasons why I was so strenuous on the S T R thing, and I think we need to exhaust all options that we possibly can to try to limit this as much as we can, and I understand there's obviously other viewpoints that need to be.
I would say this, you know, when we started the Unmet, it's gonna be a lot of different organizations dove into that, city, county, uh, community fund. If we need to do that again, and I know, I know, I don't know how sustainable it is. That's, that's the catch. And we're talking about rents that have gone up and are not going back down. You know, when we did the Unmet Needs Committee originally, it was, it was to get through the pandemic. And so there was hopefully an end in sight, but that doesn't sound like there's an end in sight to this.
Uh, no, unfortunately, um, due to state laws, there is no possible end in sight. That could continue going on as much as a landlord pleases for it to go on. And yeah, I I really am at a loss as to what we can do to limit as much as possible other than you know, I try to embrace them with open arms and full circle and try to get them connected to those resources that it so desperately need.
Thank you for sharing that. Um, any other city council reports? Tracy, nothing? Okay, well, it's still daylight outside. I said eight o'clock. I was wrong, as usual. Uh, it is eight eighteen. The city council is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.